Good evening. Welcome to the March 16, 2015, regular meeting of the Edina School Board. We do have a quorum this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We had a regular meeting on February 23. Can I have a motion to approve?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the February 23 regular
meeting of the Edina School Board. Any corrections or additions to the minutes as written? Seeing then all those in favor of approving the minutes for the February 23 meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes have been approved. First up, any members of the audience who'd like to speak?
I don't know.
How's your chance, kids? Anybody? Anybody? Referendum plans is our first report this evening.
Want to welcome Susan Broad, who's our Director of Communications. Susan's been doing a lot of the coordination work of putting all the website information, organizing the various meetings and the various publications out to the community. We welcome Susan tonight.
So, members of the board, thank you very much. And for the listening audience as well, we're just going to give an update. So, we try to every time kind of give an update on where we're at since the last meeting, and some of this is review and some of it would be new information. So, just a reminder again about the timeline and that right now we're out there kind of doing an informational campaign, sharing with voters. Absentee voting does begin on Friday, and that is no excuses now in Minnesota. So, if voters feel that they have the information that they need, they can go to the city of Edina and vote absentee, or you can apply by mail as well. May 5 is the special election. One of the questions that we get a lot is about, so why don't I see any design drawings or renderings or things? And a lot of that is because, as we do with school construction in Minnesota, is that we wait for the voters to authorize that, and then the design comes in. So, there's going to be a large opportunity for staff and stakeholder input after a successful referendum. And then we would go out for bid with construction starting next year in 2016. And we anticipate most of the construction, should this pass on May 5, being completed by fall of 2017, some will probably carry over a little bit into 2018. Again, these are our three big categories that seem to be that we've used for the last couple of bond referendums, going back to the '90s, just really focusing on enhancing building security, improving district infrastructure, and then transforming our learning spaces for today's learners as well as what we might need in the future. So, some updates that we've had since February, since our last board meeting on February 23, we continue those program discussions. Again, we are always trying to make sure that the space is aligned to program and not the other way around. Traditionally, we have said, here's the spaces that we have, and then let's adapt our learning program to that, and really trying to let those BG5 and secondary study program studies design some of that. So, some of the conversations that's going on right now is helping inform that. We've also heard from people, community members, who are attending some of the meetings that we've been doing. I'm just asking about what kinds of options might be available for citizens of our community to access some of these new spaces. So, we continue to explore that through some of the community ed program study. We are doing a traffic study with the city of Edina, looking at Valley View Road between Tracy and Gleason, understanding that there's going to be some with additional, it's already kind of a trouble, challenging traffic as we move across there, so how can we make that a little bit safer? As well as, since we'd be putting on additions at the high school, how would we help with that traffic flow there? So, that traffic study is just commencing this spring. And then we've been holding a number of student, staff, parent, and neighborhood conversations. We obviously will know about the public meetings later, but we have about 55 meetings scheduled. Some of them are PTOs, staff meetings, independent organizations who have asked us to come. So, pretty much if somebody says, we want you to come and talk about the referendum, we're going there. Some of the key questions and clarifications that we've been hearing a lot about are what exactly are those next generation spaces? So, we have some, I'll show you in a moment on the website where we have some additional possibilities. Since we don't have those blueprints, what could they look like? And that, a lot of that information really informed the work of the Facility Advisory Task Force last spring or last fall. A lot of questions about taxes, which would be understandable. And then some clarifications on grade reconfiguration. As we know, the board did approve that last year, but obviously now it's just kind of coming more to the forefront of some people's radar screen. So, as we look at those next generation learning spaces, I did want to show a video that we've put together with the help of some of our staff to sort of explain what exactly those spaces could potentially look like. There's no sound right away. It's okay.
As we think about changing spaces, one of the commentaries that I often hear about in terms of school buildings is if Rip Van Linkle were to awaken from his nap and return to America, one of the things that he would recognize, and probably the only thing, would be the American school building.
The current model of cells and bells is really about more of a 19th century education model where it's efficient. We have students in classrooms in rows, and they're just sitting there sort of intaking information from the teacher. Having that room look the same as it did when we were in more of a lecture-type system, I think kind of lends itself to why we need to move away from that mentality, because how we teach kids just doesn't fit with that anymore.
A lot of these classrooms go back to that cells and bells kind of model. So, I think for future and for updating, if we could make spaces more open and more like real life, rather than just closed off and compartmentalized.
As we think about spaces of the future, we have to really go back and look at the core educational strategies. And what is it that we really want kids to know and be able to do, and then build our spaces around that?
And we want to kind of give, give the building the look to match all the expectations that are going on right now. I think technology is becoming such an integral part into our day, even at the elementary level.
Students today are really expected to know and to do many, many different things that we, growing up, didn't have to do or were expected to do. But they're doing it in spaces that were really designed for the 1970s, the 1980s. They're expected to graduate into a world that's very technology-oriented, that's very collaborative, and they're learning and doing things in spaces that were not designed to accommodate that kind of learning and that kind of interaction between student to student and teacher to student.
Edina Public Schools need flexible learning spaces. They need places where students can collaborate, working in small groups and large groups, the ability to be able to be free, not be in a desk all day long. We have apps, we have games, we have so many different things that didn't exist in education even 10 years ago. And to think where we'll be in a few years, we need the ability to be flexible.
By renovating and remodeling our schools, it gives us an opportunity to think differently about how we use staff and how each staff has different strengths and how we can best use those strengths. And the current model of just one teacher for 29 kids, I think is somewhat outdated in the sense that we have a lot of excellent teachers, that we like to share all of their abilities. And I think that this allows us to think differently about how we use our time, talent, and space that we have at Edina, and how we can best serve the kids with all of that time, talent, and space that we have. And then it's just not locked into one teacher with one set of kids, and that's it.
We have an opportunity to expand the STEM areas, and when it comes to engineering, we need expanded spaces. And this is an opportunity for Edina schools to become a leader in this area.
I think that it's really just going to allow every student to optimize the resources that are available to them. Whereas now, you know, a lot of the teaching, you have to go at the teacher's pace. In the future, with a lot of these new spaces and just how classrooms are structured, it allows the student to go at their own pace, you know, optimize their learning, which just really allows for a lot better comprehension of the material and, in the end, greater learning and success.
Students just sitting at a desk. It's great for some situations and for some times, but other times, kids, just like adults, we all prefer to work in different places in different ways.
In a more collaborative environment, kids can definitely find other kids to work with and other strengths, and not just always feel so, this is who I am as a mass student, and this is the only time I see these kids. They get to see you all day long, and teachers get to see you all day long in different roles too.
As a parent of a kindergarten in Edina Public Schools, it's exciting to think how my daughter will learn. She will not learn the way that I learned. She will learn in her own way, because she's learning skills in which we haven't even known what kind of job she's going to be developed for. So, to have the opportunity to think that this referendum and what it could do for our schools is to be able to advance that and advance her learning in a different way in which I've never even been able to teach.
So, as you can see, we've been able to really tap into the expertise of our teachers and let them dream a little bit, and that's what we hope that they'll be able to do, should the voters approve that. So, again, just looking at what are those variety of different instructional spaces? And, you know, we know that we need a variety and not just one form of teaching for, and one form of learning for all students. Again, here's a summary of how we're breaking out those learning spaces, and this is in addition to some improvements for infrastructure as well as for security. We did want to show a little bit of examples. So, here's some pictures from some other schools across the country about what spaces could look like. And as we know, 20% of our schools are built and are taken up with hallways. So, what could that look like differently? And so, here's just an example of a couple of schools of how it used to look and how it could look in the future. Again, just looking at traditional kind of hallway models, what some of our folks are calling cells and bells, and what does that look like in the future. We also wanted to help understand, since the high school is where we're putting the majority of the additions, a lot of the other are renovations and some additions, but this is the most significant addition to accommodate the grade configuration of a 9 to 12 high school. And the blue sort of indicates where new spaces would be. Here's kind of another look at it. It doesn't really show the depth of the hill, but a little bit does show that it doesn't go all the way to the bottom of the hill, but it does help us a little bit that this particular space right here would be where some of those larger group spaces, the gymnasiums, would be going. And this is where we would be adding those 28 to 30 different kinds of classroom spaces, classroom being a variety of those kinds of spaces. If you look at just kind of a map of where that looks like, so here's what we just looked at from down the hill, there would be a tunnel that would go underneath this road. There would be some additional spaces built here. Majority of some of those classroom spaces might be here, and then we can also be looking up here as well. So, it's kind of, it's a tight space, but we believe that we can fit in those additional spaces. We're also looking at some expanded parking, and this actually was brought about from some, one of our community meetings that we had a couple of months ago, in saying, how could we use fill that we're going to have to be doing here on the side of the hill and maybe expand that parking up here, rather than going down the hill with the parking? So, really keeping it all up on that upper level. And then also looking at how we could repurpose and put some turf in some of those fields, the lower fields down there, possibility potentially putting some tennis courts up here, but obviously those decisions would be made at the design phase. So, we just kind of wanted to provide an overview of what some of those spaces could look like. People are asking about some visuals. So, again, the tax impact on a median value home in Edina Public Schools is $441,000. So, the annual impact would be $331,000. We understand that that's an investment, but trying to move, we believe that it's an investment that we need to do for our buildings. If they go to this website here on edinaschools.org/referendum2015, there's actually a tax calculator that folks can actually type in their exact home value as it comes on their property tax statement and see what the annual impact will be. We're also providing some additional information on grade reconfigurations. Like we said, some of, some folks haven't necessarily been coming along with it as long as we are. We're trying to create, it's not just about moving the ninth grade to the high school, but also creating smaller middle school spaces for our grades six through eight and trying to create more true middle school experience and making it a smaller environment with only three grades, doing some more integrated curriculum and some exploratory options. And then at the high school, creating that four-year experience that's aligned to the standards and the graduation requirements that we have at the high school level. Those conversations are, we're starting the planning for those. Obviously, the earliest that shift would happen, assuming that the referendum is successful in May, would be in the fall of 2017. So, we're actually starting this week with some listening sessions with our staff in grades nine through 12, on what potentially could happen with the high school. We hope to be, and then we plan on doing some more of those conversations with the middle school, six through eight teachers, and additional staff. Again, the timing, does, the timing of the implementation of the grade configuration change is linked with the bond referendum, but as you know, that the board approved in June of 2014, that that is the future direction. Some additional communications that we have, as we said, the website. We have some mailings that'll be coming out here shortly. We also are trying to make sure that there's always at least a little bit in any other publications that we're putting out, whether they're electronic, whether they're digital or print publications, community ed, school newsletters. We have public meetings coming up. The first one, this Thursday on March 19, we recognize there's a lot of school events going on. It's tough this time of year to find a night that there isn't a lot of information or a lot of activities going on, but for the broader community, we'll be doing that at Creek Valley. On Tuesday, April 7, will be another public meeting here in the boardroom, and we're looking to use some technology to engage our audience as well, doing a live stream and some interactivity of some questions through Twitter. And then on April 20, the League Women Voters has asked to host a conversation as well. So, I did want to just briefly go to the website just to show some additions that we've made here in the last few days, actually. So, one of the things is a little bit more information about what exactly the facilities' plan is. And most importantly, we've added some information here about what are those next generation spaces, that video. But then we've also included links to some still photos, examples of other places about what does direct instruction look like? What, and as you'll see, even in some of these, the direct instruction spaces is not necessarily all rows facing forward, but it is that teacher-guided instruction. What do individual spaces look like, small group collaborative spaces, and large group spaces look like? And then we've also added, and this is a lot of the research that the Facility Advisory Task Force used last year, as I said before. So, what are some of those, those different kinds of spaces and what potentially could happen? So, we've pulled some from other schools across the country and even from around the world. And then, in addition, we often say that we're looking at maker spaces and 21st century media centers, and so we have a couple of links on what could that look like as well, because we understand that maker spaces is kind of a buzzword, but it is that place where students can create and kind of tinker, and that is a great learning opportunity as well. So, we did want to stress that. We have some frequently asked questions that we're continuously adding to, again, here on the tax impact. The tax calculator is here, where you can just click and type in your tax personal information. We got some history and some other voter information. How do you register to vote? How do you do absentee? So, we've continued to add to that website as that being our primary resource as well you also go out to the community. So, are there any other questions or comments?
We did have a discussion at a workshop earlier this evening reviewing this information. Any other questions or comments?
I didn't have my microphone on. Thank you for putting it up on the website. Yes, the tax calculator is a nice addition, as well as all of the in-depth information about what's going on as part of the referendum. So, thank you for all your work and all the meetings you're attending for the community.
Additional questions? Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Yeah. Susan, I mean, I do, I agree with what everybody said about how everything looks great, website's good. I do also like the video. I mean, that's very impressive.
Susan, you might want to mention too, we got more video.
Yeah, we have one more video that we're working on, hoping to have that kind of cleaned up later, which is a longer, we have, we have kind of a promo video, which is about a minute and a half. And so, then we have this video that you just saw, which is about five minutes, and then we have kind of the longer overview video of the referendum, featuring one of your colleagues, David Goldstein. That'll be, you know, closer to that 10-minute mark. So, depending on people's attention span, you know, we have information out there for everybody, and then we're also really, we have a plan actually starting this week about how we can use our social media accounts to drive people to that website and view these videos. But I think, you know, it's just trying to hit those different modalities. Everybody learns in different ways. Some people want a piece of paper, some people want a video, some people want just a look on their own. So, we're trying to make sure that we're getting the information to the voters so that they can make an educated vote.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our budget plan.
Director Margot Vock has been working since December on developing the budget. She did present some preliminary information to the board last month, also worked with the board finance committee on evolving plans, and is here to give us an update. The board will be taking a look at our tentative 2015-16 budget later in the evening.
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Dresen. A good portion of this presentation, we have gone through components of it since December during the various phases of the budget process. So, I'm not going to go through all of that in detail, but I did keep it in the presentation for reference for the public. A lot of information about the task force, administration, and the board, finance committee have studied, where do we, what are our sources of revenue? Where do we spend our money? How do we compare to average? We used all that kind of information as we brought forth a proposal to you this evening. And historically, where have we reduced dollars? And we've taken a look at that. But I won't go through all those components tonight. Updates from the Budget Advisory Task Force. The base plan still assumes a 0% increase in the formula. However, the legislative session is, has been moving along, along with updated budget forecasts from the state. So, we've revised a plan that includes assuming a 1% increase on the formula for 15-16. We also have the budget alignment plan included in the fund balance chart that we have been looking at monthly now since December. So, I'll come back to this chart after we talk about what's in that budget alignment recommendation from the task force. We did incorporate, as we've been talking about, a one-time use of fund balance since we did perform better for 13-14, and worked through the various steps of the budget process using the Budget Alignment Task Force. We also took, now that we're more than halfway through the year, we took a look at where we could have one-time savings in 14-15. That was a part of our conversation, as we also had enhancement requests that were for one-time. So, we thought it would be a good idea to take a look at this year and see, you know, what, how could we help even in occurring savings between now and the end of the year? That's our process. So, the Budget Alignment Task Force, we did receive enhancements requests, a number of them. The recommendations from the task force are all one-time. They did bring forward and consider 14-15, the one-time enhancements in this current year, that in the base long-range plan were reduced because they were one-time. We had a conversation as a task force around those. Is there a need to continue them for another year as they related to some studies going on? So, part of the recommendation is that we would continue those, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And certainly consideration with the next generation planning of any enhancement request or reduction request. They, we went, had three, four tiers worth of adjustments or reductions. We went to tier two. Many of those are one-time or, and then there are some ongoing savings. And again, we look at 14-15 savings areas. We experienced more retiree savings because we had higher-than-average retirees. We did discuss some options for carryover funds. You'll see that. And I would say there's limited staffing impact in the, in the recommendations. So, in more detail, the proposed in one-time enhancements in a variety of area. The first one does relate to if the bond referendum is successful. So, if it isn't successful, this enhancement certainly is dependent upon the results of May 5. It would be a coordination or administration of the next generation programming along with the facilities. Some of that could be offset in bond proceeds if that position is working specifically, for example, on ordering flexible equipment or identifying needs for furniture, fixture, and equipment, for example. The next two items relate to the next generation program planning, strategic implementation. Last year, the majority of these dollars were used for pilot programs for the secondary study, and now with birth to grade five moving along in their progress, we will more than likely have some needs for funds, whether it's pilot programs or that, it still will be determined, but we'll need dollars for that, along with staff training to implement the pre-Cave 12 next generation planning. Then the remaining three on this slide are the 14-15 one-time enhancements that the Budget Advisory Task Force or Alignment Task Force is recommending to move forward and continue into 15-16. Proposed one-time reductions. The first one is use of bond proceeds for partially funding that, the position that would be dependent upon the referendum election. We do have some, a variety of areas here with carryover dollars where there's savings from 14-15 that we would be able to use or realignment of dollars. And ongoing reductions, because we did have higher-than-average retirees, we can plan, estimate some additional savings there. You as a board in December approved the property liability carrier change. That decreases are deductible, but the overall premium stayed the same, so we have an ongoing savings there. Limiting, not eliminating, but just limiting travel and conferences, custodial duty modification, which really would relate to our mail delivery, so special ed and intervention reallocation. So, in summary, the one-time enhancements and then the one-time reductions is a total addition to the budget of just a little over $460,000, but then we have ongoing reductions. So, the net result would be an additional $176,500 to the budget. However, we are anticipating and hopeful that we'll have a 1% increase from the state funding, which would help, certainly help fund that addition, which the majority, as you can see, is one-time. Next steps are that we, are the variables. Is, of course, to monitor the legislative session. We are monitoring enrollment and continue to do that through the fall. It changes well into the summer and into September, and certainly that has an impact on the budget. We were even discussing that at the work session. Certainly, the bond election, we talked about some changes within the WMAP structure. We do have a grant, intervention grant approval that comes every other year. That is up for request and approval from MDE. We have received it in the past. We see no reason why we wouldn't receive it again, but that is a variable until we get that official approval. We don't know that for sure. And contract parameters. So, we are in the latter phases of our budget process where we have our official board discussion, even though you've had reports ongoing monthly for the last three months. This is the official board discussion. We'll continue to take feedback, and then we'll request approval of this plan on April 13. And again, monitor all the variables we talked about between now and fall. So, we'll open it up for questions from the board.
Questions? Again, we did spend a little bit of time on this at the workshop prior to this meeting, and also board finance did discuss this as well at a prior meeting. Any other questions? Thank you, Margot.
Thanks, Margot.
Thank you.
Ask Margot to stay on board and ask David White to come up, our transportation director. We've been...
Good evening again.
Yep, and we're going to ask David and Margot to give us a little bit of overview of a pilot project that we've been studying and now are later tonight talking about a recommendation.
Yes, we, in 2012, the board approved a pilot study for cameras in the school buses. The purpose of this was multiple purposes. One is safety in terms of drivers having their attention on the road and also, at the same time, trying to have their attention behind them with student activity behind them. And if we could assist with cameras and student safety, driver safety, pedestrian and traffic safety, that would be good. Also, in terms of student management, and if there are any issues on the budget, which we hope there aren't, that that may assist with that, and also driving, driver training and monitoring. And it also can be useful, depending where the camera is placed, for other driver behavior, not our drivers, but drivers that are ahead or behind or going around a school bus. It can assist in all of those areas. And so, David and his staff has been implementing this pilot and have some results, and we have a recommendation. So, with that, I'll, David and I'll tag team it here, and we'll give you a quick summary and answer any questions you have for the discussion tonight.
First, how they're set up.
Okay. So, we'll just talk about the setup real quick of the cameras. So, what we're looking at is doing four cameras per bus. One camera will be facing forward, across the hood out the front of the bus. That's to help catch any type of incident, accident, watching school bus stops as the driver approaches, so on. The second camera is face, is up above the driver, facing down the driver's head, down the steps. That's to catch the driver, any actions at the front of the bus, students boarding, potential parent having a conflict. parent having a conflict at the stairs of the bus. Third camera is going to be at the front of the bus, facing backwards to kind of catch the first half of the bus. And then the fourth camera mounted at the rear of the bus, facing forward.
And project results?
Okay, so it is all about making the school bus as safe as possible. And as we look at some of the results that we have had and will hope to still have would be improved student behavior, increasing the driver focus on the driving and road conditions. We only have two eyes. Driver has to concentrate on the road. So if you can just imagine for a moment, if you have one eye facing forward, and the driver always has one eye facing up in the mirror, having the cameras onboard, hopefully get both eyes back on the road all the time. When we look at investigation of student incidents or staff incidents, right now we can spend days, hours and hours, principals, whether we're interviewing students, interviewing the staff, or if we had video documentation of it, we could, within a matter of minutes, have the result without spending a lot of time investigating issues on the bus.
And the cameras are used to investigate issues as they occur. The intent is not to be monitoring the cameras all the time to create issues. It's more of a reactive, if there's a question, then we, we have the ability to refer to the camera as needed.
Yeah, it's a 320 gig hard drive on the bus, it's like a DVR. It starts recording, and then about a month and a half or so, we figure, it'll just start writing over itself and just continues on. It is locked in the bus with two separate keys to gain access to the DVR.
We also, there's a number of districts who already have implemented cameras on their bus. We reported on that in 2012 when we talked about the pilot. The recommendation would be to install cameras over a four-year period. How many buses a year was that?
About fifteen.
Fifteen buses a year. Estimated across about $25,000 a year, which would be funded through transportation and capital existing budgets. It does fall within the board policy, which is referenced in your discussion resolution in terms of, in 2012, and that policy's been updated through Policy Committee, so it does fall within the board policy. Any additional things we missed on your report?
No, I guess we just open it for questions.
Excuse me, do you want to mention a little bit of just about the data privacy of the video? Who's, who's, who can access the video?
Okay, so like I said, the DVR is locked on the school bus. I would have access to the keys. The only time we would be pulling the video is if it was requested, or they need to investigate something. And then the access would just be myself and a principal that might be, we might be dealing with in a particular school, and that would be it. We have the ability, we have the ability to send a video snapshot, a still shot, to the principal, or they can, we can download it and they could get it offline for investigation.
In case of an employee issue, if there was one, might be HR in combination with David.
And the system does have the ability to blur out faces, just zero in on specifics and blur everything else out to keep privacy.
Is it, you list the cost at $25,000. Is there maintenance or a long-term cost that we're looking at here?
At least what we've seen from other school districts that are using the two type of cameras, that we've been trying, the maintenance costs have been very little to none, as they have seemed to have perfected the system as the years have gone on. The DVR is very small, compact. Districts report no problems with the cameras that they're using. So we see very little ongoing maintenance costs.
And is there, is there a requirement for the driver to turn it on, or it just automatically runs as, as long as, when the bus starts?
Yes, when the, it's on standby when the driver hits the key, the camera system fires up, and then it'll stay on for, you can set some of these parameters, but can stay on for five to 10 minutes afterwards, after the driver shuts the key off to continue recording, but is on when the bus is on.
There is, and you'll probably explain it better than I will, there is an option if a driver suspects an incident, a way that they can mark the tape for easy reference in going back if something is occurring. Technically sure how that works, but I know.
Well, yeah, and we think of distractions. One idea of the cameras is that there is a button up front called a panic button or a mark button, that if the driver is driving and hears of an incident taking place, instead of having to look up, he could just press the button on the camera system. It would put a mark on the tape where we could go back and easily identify the few minutes that we need to of the incident, and he can continue driving.
Was there, what particular feedback was there from the bus drivers and principals who participated in the pilot?
So we put cameras on four buses from three different vendors. Two, one vendor, the cameras did not function very well, so they were on and off, off more often than on. The other two, the drivers liked the idea of having the cameras on the buses. It's not only like saying extra set of eyes, protection for themselves, for the students, for everyone. They thought the kids reacted very well to the cameras and that they knew they were on. These cameras are recording all the time. On my back in the seventies, eighties, where there was just one camera that was floating around 65 buses, you never knew where it was. The students do realize that these are on all the time. And there is sound with all the cameras also. And the principals, a lot of the principals that I've talked to, that have come from different school districts, they've already used cameras in those districts that they came from, and are all very supportive of the cameras.
Was there any feedback from parents or students?
When we initially did the pilot program, we sent out an email notifying parents that we were going to be doing a pilot project. Out of the responses that I received, which was about, I think at the time, 35, only one of them was negative. Most were all very supportive of it. I have parents every once in a while when there's an incident on the bus, call and say, you know, please hold the tape, don't, you know, don't lose the tape. Of course, I don't have any tape to lose at the moment, but, so a lot of times we're already getting requests saying, you know, do you have that tape?
How many occasions did we have over the year to actually take a look at incidents?
It, you know, it really varies a lot every year. Over the course of this year, I mean, several dozen times for sure, we could have, would have been nice to have been able to go back to the videotape versus doing it to a fashion way, I guess you'd say.
But of the buses that actually had it, were there any, did we make any use of the video?
Yeah, in one, I could describe one incident, some of them where, a lot of them, in particular this lady, resident called, reporting that the driver, they thought the bus had run a stop sign. So we played the videotape back. This one had, happened to have the forward-facing camera. So we were able to identify the spot, the issue, had the driver come up, had them watch the tape. So that's just one example of usefulness where we can identify issues and respond to them quickly.
And just, it does record sound?
Yeah, all, all the cameras do have sound, so you can, if you just go to one camera, you can pick the sound up from that camera in that area.
And are there any legal issues with recording conversation?
As long as we have to post at the front of the bus, a sign that says the bus is being monitored and recorded, that is the law right now.
Thank you.
I neglected to mention in the beginning, but we did take this through Finance Committee. And again, it's a discussion item tonight.
And are we planning to continue collecting data to see if we're seeing a decrease in behavior, or do we have baseline? Are we continuing to do that?
If we would fully implement, certainly we would want to continue with the data. Right now, I think the comparison data is, I listen to data, is the four buses versus the other 60-some buses that don't have it, and comparing that right now.
Was one of the buses, as part of the pilot, the activity bus? I remember when we introduced the idea of the video cameras, the activity buses were one, was one route that was cited that may have a particular benefit.
Yeah, so the, the cameras were put on four different buses, and one of them was the, one of the activity routes in the evening of 4:30. So that was running all through the pilot. And you can't say 100% that it was the cameras that made everything a nice ride every day, but definitely the driver felt helped. Yeah, for sure, yeah.
We covered this, we did discuss this in Finance, and for those of us who were around in 2012 when we started the pilot, you know, we did talk about, you know, the fact that it does improve, you know, situations where it's he said, she said. And then the, the concept that our bus drivers can keep their eyes focused on the road instead of having to be behind them focusing on the kids. So there definitely is safety implications that are beneficial.
Most definite.
Additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our leadership update. Dr. Dressen.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, thank you. It's again, we've moved to a pattern where we're just checking in on a monthly basis on a variety of leadership topics. A lot of it focuses back on our strategic plan of next generation edin public schools. Again, where we're focusing on staying strong with our areas of excellence, our areas of branding, and what we're doing to advance our excellence. So everything we're looking on is this commitment to continuous improvement. You heard about it again tonight in a variety of our reports. Again, just to update you on our three areas of strategic planning around personalized learning, comprehensive programming and partnerships. Probably one thing we just want to mention on the personalized learning, we have started our Gifted and Talented Study. So that's kind of one of the final personalized learning components that we're doing study on. We're going to hear more about the E-Learning Square program tonight. And as far as partnership things, we're also going to hear a little bit more about work being done as relates to some of our long-term plans with professional improvement, or professional development for our staff. Again, three-year plans, we're getting very committed to completing our power standards and learning assessments. This will give us a guaranteed viable curriculum moving forward. It's important to have these bedrock places, pieces in our plan so that we can move everything forward. We do have a BG V study that'll actually be coming later this spring, and the Board heard a little bit about that at a work session tonight, where we'll have, looking at some major options that have been studied. We'll also be seeking community feedback, once these options are presented to the Board in later, next week, March 23rd. And then we'll be seeking more staff and community feedback, and then coming back for final recommendations to the Board. And then we'll be pursuing pilot projects in 15, 16. On the secondary side, we're beginning our discussions with our teaching staff now around what this could mean, both at the middle school and the high school. We're beginning with high school dialogue, so staff that were involved in the 912 program. And then in April, come back with the second phase of the middle school programming. I'd call on Steve Butner at this point to come forward and talk a little bit about plans as we continue to move our technology initiative forward around E-Learning Squared. It's our Bring Your Own Device to School. And thanks, Steve, for being here tonight.
Good evening, Board. Good evening Superintendent Dressen. I just want to give you a short update on E-Learning Squared. We do believe it's in our implementation phase, so it's been in place for a number of years. But it's always good just to kind of go back and define what it is again. Some people want to hear, it's often a good idea just to talk about what the definition is. And it has three critical components. One is ensuring that as we look at the transformation or the access to digital content, ensuring that we have access to digital content in the classroom where appropriate. Ensuring that our teachers have access to digital tools and understand how to adapt and leverage that digital content where appropriate. And then finally, it is about ensuring that every student, age-appropriate, has a digital device in order to leverage that in their learning experience. Our framework around digital learning is really what we call our Digital Age Learning Framework, and it has three major components which are interweaved through our educational competencies. Those are accessing content, so be able to access content that you might not be able to access because you have digital tools, such as being able to find information and resources, videos on the internet. The other one is to be able to collaborate. How do we use technology to be able to collaborate not only within our class, with our teammates and our students, with our teachers, and around the world? And finally, to be able to create content that we might not be able to create without the use of digital tools. Our professional development is a critical component of this, and we are using what's called the SAMR model. And our analogy is it's like a pool. Low uses of technology, which we call substitution and augmentation, happen in the shallow end. And then there's some incredible opportunities that without technology, we wouldn't be able to see happen. Those are modifications and redefinitions. What we like to tell our teachers is, it's all right not to always be in the deep end because we know that's tough, but to swim between the shallow and the deep end, but it's not okay to be on the pool deck any longer. We have to be jumping into the pool and learning how to leverage digital technology within our instruction. And then of course, finally, it's about our devices. We had a chance to survey our parents, and our parents' response about E-Learning Squared was very positive. 77% of our parents were, had a favorable response to E-Learning Squared. Our, next slide, our students also were incredibly positive about the E-Learning Squared. They talked a lot about how this kept them more motivated in class, kept them more organized in class, and did understand the power of that technology. They also talked a little bit about the potential for distraction, potential for how that technology can distract, and we worked really hard, and we'll talk a little bit about some of the things we're putting in place to mitigate that. And with our staff, the changes in the, as we continue to put E-Learning Squared in place, the favorable ratings continue to grow. As our teachers become more comfortable about how to leverage technology in their class, how to use technology, how to work through classroom management of technology, we go from negatives and neutrals to extremely positive. So next year, our plan is, is to ensure that devices were age-appropriate. And we looked at K through two, or K through second degree, and we know that one-to-one really doesn't make sense necessarily at that age. And so instead, what we're doing is what's called Pick Two. Over a three-year cycle, each, each year, a school can pick either a Chromebook or an iPad cart to be used in a grade level K through two. For third through fifth year, we'll start on our second year of a one-to-one implementation with Chromebook carts in the classroom. That doesn't mean that Chromebooks are going to be used every day, it just means that they have access to those Chromebooks when they need them. And we've been seeing some really positive work with our fifth-grade classes, and we plan on working with our fourth-grade teachers to implement that this, next year, and then the following year, third grade. And then six through 12, we'll continue to do our E-Learning Squared one-to-one, where it's an expectation that a student does have a personal digital device. And next year, we'll be offering the opportunity for our sixth-grade classrooms to access those digital devices through our relationship with the Best Buy Web Store. If they don't have a device or need a device, we'll provide one at the district. And again, I just want to bring back this importance of the fact is that we know there's an incredible power with that technology, but there's also negative consequences with technology. I want to compliment the Teaching and Learning Department and the teachers. In January, we had our Digital Citizenship Month, and it was a great opportunity for us to have that conversation. What we've learned from that is that conversation can't end and can't be in just one month. So we're talking about next year, having those themes, but carry them through over four months, over four months. So each month will be a theme, and we'll embed that, and we'll continue to have that conversation. That way, it's not a one-and-done, but it's something that we constantly look at. And then I, I do work very closely with parents who call and are concerned about filtering and concerned about access to that, to ensure that their children are being protected, being, content is being filtered on our network. And it always is a double-edged sword of how much we filter and how much we provide access to. Any questions for E-Learning Squared?
I have a question. Can you, do you happen to know off the top of your head, how many students were accessing that we were helping get Chromebooks through the district, district renting, you know, sort of through the equity?
I can, I can pull that, I can pull those numbers for you. We do check out those devices every year, and I think there's about 100 to 170 in the elementary, or excuse me, in the, each of the middle schools. And then at the high school, every 12th grader was offered an opportunity of having a digital device, a Chromebook, and I think we've checked out about 500, and that graduating class is over 600, so not everyone took advantage of it because they had their own device.
Go ahead, Lenny.
So I've understood in the past that the iPad doesn't work well with Google Docs. It seems to me that we have this preference towards Chromebooks in terms of what the district... district is providing. So the question I would have is why are we looking at iPads as an option in K through two as opposed to staying with Chromebooks as we're doing in fourth and fifth? And...
That's a great question. We do offer both, but we do see that in those earlier grade levels where there are more of a tactile approach to it. It's that ability to touch and to manipulate on that iPad seems to be a preference of some of those teachers as they work with manipulatives and things like that. Then as we get into the second and third grade letter, levels, then we start practicing more of our keyboarding skills. We're studying to do a little bit more research, and that's where then the typing of the Chromebook seemed to be a more desired tool at those grade levels. I just want to, I just want to iterate, a iPad does work in our ecosystem. Our ecosystem, we try to make it as, as computer agnostic as possible, but the lack of a keyboard in an iPad world, and then also just some of the limitations of Google Docs collaboration is, is something that makes it not as ideal as using a Chromebook, but it does mean you could use it. And indeed, we have some students that will continue to use their iPad and use them very well.
Additional questions?
So we had a cycle that we're going through where kids could re-up in eighth or ninth grade. Are we shifting that mindset as far as the Web Store, going just with sixth?
That's a great question. Last year, we offered the Web Store to sixth, or this year, sixth, eighth and ninth. And so next year's ninth graders have that opportunity this year. So we kind of supersized it this year. So next year, we're going to take a pause on the ninth, but we will come back to it. Our end goal will be sixth and ninth grade level opportunities for the best, for the Web Store going forward.
So the current seventh graders who did this in sixth grade opted into the program, then when they're in ninth grade is when they would refresh?
That's exactly right.
Great. Thank you.
Additional questions?
Thank you, Steve.
I'm going to ask Randy, you can just stay at his spot at the table, but if you could just give us a quick update on some of the work going on this summer. We talked about professional learning and the plans that we have evolving, and if you could just give us a quick flyover, Randy, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. We have a very exciting summer learning institute this August, and part of the planning around the learning institute is if we can do more professional development during the summertime, those are fewer days that we need to pull teachers out of the classroom, fewer days away from students. So the format of our summer Edina Learning Institute is that we have keynote speakers on each of our four days. They are framed around the educational competencies. So we're going to focus on four competencies this summer, specifically global competence, motivated lifelong learners, innovative thinkers and creators, and a healthy, well-rounded person. So we have a keynote speaker on each of those days, following each of those themes. And the purpose of the keynote is to motivate and engage and inspire. And then following the keynotes, we'll have our own staff that are offering learning breakout sessions. So our staff learning from other staff. And then we'll have our lunch, and then in the afternoon, we have facilitated workshop time, which is intended for staff to be able to create or generate a product and start putting their learning into place, into practice in either unit, or a lesson, or some aspect of what they're teaching. Our four keynotes are, on the left-hand side, we have Dana Mortensen, who is the CEO of World Savvy, the founder of World Savvy. We have Barbara Bray and Kathleen McClasky on the second day, and they are, they are the gurus in the country around personalized learning, which is a direction Edina Public Schools is headed. On the third day, we have Lafrance Davis, who is instructional digital learning specialist, and she works with many of our, or some of our consortium schools, and is a national presenter. And then on the far right, we have John Underwood, who is a national speaker and trainer around physical and mental wellness. And so we have an exciting lineup to engage our staff and motivate our staff, and again, an opportunity for our staff to present, learn from each other, grow. And we will also invite staff from other districts to come and participate in the fun.
Questions of Randy around some of our staff development plans? And you will be probably later this spring rolling out the entire three-year plan and how that will work in align to our next generation schools.
Correct. We have a draft that we are working on, and we'll hope to have that ready at the spring to present to board and staff and community.
Thank you, Randy. Ask Mary Mandarfield to join me at the table here just to give a quick update to the board around our district achievement integration budget. It's taking action later tonight. The board is aware, annually, we approve this. This is on the timeline for the Minnesota Department of Education, so we need to fast-track this a little bit. But Mary, if you could give a quick flyover of the work we're doing and a little bit about the budget numbers.
Thank you. As Dr. Dressen indicated, you will have this as an Ashnider item later in the evening. Last year, we created and the board approved our three-year plan for the achievement and integration. This is our second year of our three-year plan. So things that we were focused on and continue to focus on is college and career readiness for underserved students, and that would be through our Avid program. We have our Young Scholars Program, which continues to increase participation in rigorous courses by our underserved students, family engagement programming. So one of our goals is to continue to increase families, all families' participation in our schools. One new item that we have on the, in the budget this year are a halftime Somali culture liaison and a halftime Spanish liaison that we will be adding. Differentiated instruction and targeted interventions at our middle school. We provide some double-blocked instruction for students there. We continue to train teachers and administrators on both PLCs and also culturally responsive teaching. And then continue to work with our program, our Minneapolis Transportation Program, and support those students. So they all align. This all aligns to the All for All Initiative. We have some areas we can continue to improve on. One piece I did not mention is our extended learning. So we run a Saturday School program here. We provide the transportation. We have been going since October. We have on a consistent Saturday, 60-plus students that are coming to our program. One of the goals at the end of this year is for us to be able now to evaluate the data to say, how has this made a difference for students? Of the total revenue we get, you can see it's just shy of a million dollars. Ninety-three thousand of that is aid we qualify for through what's called incentive aid. So in order to qualify for the, qualify for the incentive aid, we need to include in the plan activities that decrease racial and economic disparities between our district and member districts. So that works well with our connection with the WeMap schools. Of our total budget, either 10% can go for administration and 10% for staff development, or 20% for professional development, but 80% must go to student programming, of which we are over 80% at this point. Any particular questions you'd like to ask about the budget?
Again, this aligns pretty close with our past budgets and really aligns nicely with our plans. Mary, you might also want to mention some of our training plans with Shiroki Hawley for next year.
Yes. So in our budget, we are contracting with Shiroki Hawley. Shiroki is a national consultant that really works well with culturally responsive teaching, and he will be part of the staff kickoff. It aligns nicely. So Shiroki's work really aligns nicely with work we've done. It also aligns nicely with the new teacher evaluation. So in the teacher evaluation, we can find at least nine descriptors where his work will align with, with our teacher evaluation model. So we're excited to have Shiroki come in. We hope it's the first year of a two-year commitment. He typically doesn't commit with a district longer than two years, feeling that we should be able to get some good strategies and learn along the way.
And that will also be an opportunity, I think, for Shiroki also to do some reach out to our community, our parent community as well. And I think it's just going to be a helpful tool, but that's all part of this budget process.
Any questions?
I just have a quick question. It's really helpful information, so thank you. Any general observations now that we're a couple of years into the grant? Is there, has there been an opportunity to observe impact and a difference that it's making, or maybe just a new direction that it's introducing for us, saying we need to move over here?
So I think I will choose to highlight as an example, the Young Scholars Program. So it is now our fifth year of it. It's actually sixth year. So we have our first group of kids in, in middle school. And when we looked at our data prior to this, we were finding that the students that were in our gifted program, it wasn't, it wasn't reflective of our school district's demographics. That has changed as a result of our, of our Young Scholars Program. Avid has been another program that continues to reach a number of students. The Cornell note-taking is used at, at various schools, more than just in that particular classroom. I think we continue to see an increase in enrollment in some of our higher-level courses. And, and the goal, though, is for us to continue to do that. So it'll be interesting. And, and I anxiously, along with Randy Smazel and Dr. Dressen, await for Shiroki Hawley to work with our staff as we continue to, you know, move our staff forward.
Additional questions? Thank you, Mary. Any else, Rick? Thank you. Next up, we have our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our consent agenda for this evening. Rick, could you please walk us through?
Certainly will. We have, certainly will. We have our personnel recommendations. Again, this is the time of the year when we are not doing a lot of hiring, but just making a lot of decisions as relates to employment for next year. We have our expenditures payable for March 16th, 2016. We are appointing an additional legal counsel, Engelmeier and Unhanna. They are specialized in the area of employment, and so we just want one more resource available to us in the area of legal counsel. We have some training and planning incentives. This is, over the summer months, we are looking at some compensation levels that we haven't addressed for a few years. This was informal in the past. We want to formalize this through the board process, but this does align well with Randy previously had talked about with the Edina Learning Institute. And it does address a variety of ways our teachers are coming back to work in the summer and some compensation. We have student teaching with Luther College and Minnesota State University, Morehead. And then finally, some field trips and gifts that, again, the community continues to support us in special ways. And that would conclude the consent agenda.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions or comments or items anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Rick, earlier overlooked the overall agenda. You want to walk us through the balance of tonight's meeting?
Certainly can. So we just went through the consent agenda, and the board did support those consent agenda items. And the action items tonight, we have the budget that, around achievement and integration that Mary will just presented on. We also have a construction management firm. We've had our finance committee looking at that very closely, and they have a recommendation for action tonight. We have some summer projects and capital that we'll be addressing later. We also have the city easement that we did take back to administration and came back with revised easement at Countryside. We have some, then election judges for the May 5th referendum, as well as some policies for the board to move forward on. And then finally, we move to discussion where we'll take our first look at the budget for 2015-16, the thought of video cameras and that plan moving forward. Also, a one-time waiver on policy 538, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And finally, we take our first look at board dates for the 15-16 school year, as well as some scheduled policies that we're reviewing. And that would conclude the agenda for tonight. Earlier this evening, the board did meet in a work session. At that time, we talked a little bit about our strategic planning, the referendum, the budget. And that would conclude kind of the background information for the meeting earlier tonight, as well as the agenda for the remainder of tonight.
Thank you, Rick. We're on to the action portion of tonight's meeting. The...
Randy, this might be out of order, but I just noticed that we, it says on our consent agenda that we had a field trip for a civil rights research tour, and we had nothing in our packet. So was that pulled from our board documents?
There was no attachments in our packet, yeah.
So, so did we actually, I mean, so we didn't see anything about it, so I don't know that we've actually approved it because we had no document. It's, the only place we see it is in the, is an agenda listing.
Place tab. So we will approve it as being removed from the agenda because it's not there, which is accurate, and...
We can address it at the March 23rd meeting.
Next meeting. Good, good point, Kathy. Thank you. Next up for action, we have the achievement integration budget and plan for 15-16, which Mary presented on earlier. A motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the fiscal year achievement integration budget in the amount of $999,049 for 15-16. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the budget as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mary. Next up, we have our construction management services action item. Can I get a motion to bring that one to the floor?
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Kraus Anderson Construction Company to provide construction management services for pre-referendum construction services, and upon successful vote of the bond referendum, professional services relating to the construction management of the next-gen facilities plan. Can I get a motion?
We just did.
I'm sorry. Background, policies, or facilities spend a bunch of time on this, as did finance? Were just finance?
Just primarily facilities. Finance received an update, but now that we separated the two committees, we've got some different work going on between the two. But we did conduct a quote process. The results are in your packet. I do want to certainly point out that with the results pre-referendum work, there were, there is no charge. So obviously, the approval is, we're recommending Kraus Anderson, but the approval is dependent upon the May 5th election in terms of continuing work forward. There are not costs to the pre-referendum services. We did solicit quotes from five different firms. We did have two respond, two very good firms. They are the major players in the market for this type of work. The facilities committee interviewed, did reference checks, or administrative staff did reference checks, asked, facilities committee asked for follow-up information. We did a great deal of work and appreciate the work involved. Von Dirks, the district architect, was a, as a reference on our, our team in terms of helping us out. And you have the results in terms of rates and ranges of services and the costs. We did our best to estimate the actual overall cost, but it's difficult at this time because all the costs are estimates in, until we get through the design phase. But we did our best as a committee to try to compare apples to apples and, and also compare, find out a number of hours on site, how, how are the hours structured, who's the main point person, what types of facilities and experiences. So it just isn't based, the recommendation isn't just based on costs, is my point. So the committee is recommending Kraus Anderson Company. Their overall, their, their rate on construction fee is lower, but their overall interim estimate, which is a very rough estimate, is slightly higher than Wink. However, the committee felt that their experience, the structure and the management structure they bring as a team was, would be a good fit for the high school project and all of our projects, and then also their experience with handling this type, type of work. And so that's a recommendation from our, our team. Approval of this would then authorize administration to work with legal counsel to finalize the contract as per, per these quotes. So, and I'd open it up for questions and also from facility committee members. And, and Rick, you were also on the, on the committee for additional feedback.
Margot, in it, with this decision...
Margot, with this decision, I know some other decisions cost is the final decider, having to take the lowest bid. But with this, we base it on more things than just the bid you were saying, correct?
It's how, it's a quote, it's not a bid.
Sorry?
So, and so the way we structured it was to also be evaluated on experience, construction management approach, project approach, the structure of the team, all of those components. So there was evaluation of a variety of factors, and that was very clear in the requests that went out.
And then I guess my other question would be, in terms of making a decision between these two, I know we have had experience with Kraus Anderson in the past, but what made us choose, or could the members speak to the choice of Kraus Anderson again for this project?
And that was an interview question, very directly asked of Kraus Anderson in terms of their experience here. And is that, and we, as a committee, discussed it, is that a pro or a con, or you could find examples where it is or it isn't. I'll open it up to committee members to give their response, too.
We had very spirited discussions about this. They are basically the two best firms to do K-12 construction management. So we were assured that either way, we, you know, they were both very strong firms. So there was, we did take into consideration that we had, we had used Kraus Anderson in the past and talked to them about some of those issues. They're a much bigger, much bigger firm than the Wink firm. And I think at the end of the day, the feeling that at the high school project was going to be, with just the extent of that renovation and building into that hillside, that was going to be a bigger, complex project. And we just wanted to make sure that the firm that we had had the resources and the number of people and the level of scale that we would need to complete that project. So I think that probably tipped the scale at the end of the day, at least for me.
I would add that as a committee, we spent a lot of time considering who the individuals would be that would be responsible for the project and had commitments from both firms, that these are the teams, that they would be on site, that they would be available, and that the firms were committed to having them be on the project for the duration. But then comparing the teams, I think there was a greater comfort from everyone on the committee that the individuals that Kraus offered were stronger and would be the better choice and better serve the district. And I think that was a strong feeling from staff.
And I think that's what tipped me, having Eric Hamilton's, you know, the point person for us, who's going to deal with the teams on a daily basis. You know, we can talk about all the different things, but that, he really, that put a lot of weight for me, was that he was more comfortable with that current structure, that structure of the point people for the, who are on each site.
Couple of questions. Are we going to have any overlap in maintenance projects that we have ongoing with construction at these buildings? And how do we interact with an architect who's working sort of lead those projects, but with the referendum, assuming it passes, having a construction manager? So just awareness for that, I guess, is more than anything else. And the second thing is, are we clear on when a construction manager requires cost and how the approval process for that? And I don't need an answer now, but just want to make sure that that's in the contract and that's real clear, so there's no surprises on anybody's part, as far as, we know some of the basic percentages, but a lot of these, it isn't hidden costs, but it's just costs that aren't really necessarily clear and open, to make sure that there's an approval process on how those dollars are spent, so.
Yes, we will, in answer to question two, we will do that and structure the contract. There are a couple of different ways you can structure the contract. And one, in considering the size of this project and the complexity, would be a fixed cost or a not-to-exceed type contract that incorporates, obviously, all the, everything in the review and comment and et cetera, et cetera, with these rates and estimated time, and have a fixed amount or capped amount, which the committee talked about. And then, of course, language, you know, if we, if the district changes in a major way the scope, obviously, we would come back and negotiate what that would be. And then in terms of your first question, in regards to other projects going on, such as alternative facilities, we did, the RFP specifically was only for the bond referendum. However, both companies have experience with alternative facilities. And we did talk about, you know, there may be an appropriate time to incorporate their services into, because they'll be in the buildings, into an alt facilities project. It may not even be any additional cost because they're already in the building, and it's just a matter of, well, we're here doing this, and this is going on over here. Let's talk about how we're going to manage that together. But if, that would be a district choice or a district recommendation. For example, Eric Hamilton coming in saying, we really need them involved in this because of the complexity of everything that's going on in the building. We did not want to have the quote go out and say, just automatically, 100% of our alt facilities projects would be under the umbrella of a construction management firm. So we want to leave that up to district choice. Similar to, there are some projects from architect's standpoint that we, you know, there's a roofing bid later on the agenda tonight where it's not a recommendation of the architect, it's a recommendation of a specific roofing engineering firm that we are using, where we have made that choice to go in that particular area. So does that help explain both of those?
Yeah, no, that's great.
Okay.
And my only other comment would be to suggest some kind of holdback because the tie-out on these projects is terrible and can get overextended. So I would suggest some type of holdback at the end that's substantial, so that they're feeling some pain if they're not tying things out in a time-efficient manner, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor of approving the construction managers, management services award as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for your work on this and the time put into this. Next up, we have paving at Highlands Elementary. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved and seconded to award a contract with Midwest Asphalt Corporation for paving improvements at Highlands Elementary School. A little background, please, Margot.
This year, it's much more fun coming with bid results than last year. So we have favorable results. Again, we had seven bidders. We structured bids this year with several alternates, as we talked about when the mechanical bids for Countryside were approved. We did the same with paving and roofing, having some alternates, just not knowing where the market is. But we're fortunate to be able to approve not only the base bid, but the alternates. In this particular project, it's partially funded through alt facilities, and the alternative, the alternative one is funded through capital, because that's not fundable through alternative facilities. But while we're there, it makes sense to do it all at once, and we have the funding through capital that was approved as part of the projects you approved in February. So I would, and we have had the Midwest Asphalt in the district before, and so would recommend approval.
Excellent. Any questions? My only question is, assuming the referendum passes, are we going to be tearing this up again in a couple of years because the entrance, for example, to Highlands is going to at least have some modifications to it?
Eric is working, always looking at everything with that lens, but I will double-check and ask him that question. But everything he's thinking about is all about, you know, making sure that this stays in place, and we don't have to, whether it's internal or external to the building, we're not ripping up again.
I didn't think this project covered the actual entrance, because this is part two of the paving that was done, I think, two years ago. So this is the two parts that are actually like addendum lots, not the core.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the paving at Highlands Elementary with the winning bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have re-roofing at Highlands. Get a motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the roofing contract at Highlands Concord and Creek Valley Elementaries. A little background, please, Margot.
We had eight bidders for this project, very competitive, as you can see by the results. And again, I just stated earlier, pointing out that our engineering, Inspec Engineering Firm were the consultants on this particular project, and they have worked with diverse construction services, and we're making recommendation there. And just as a side note, because we've had several projects come in under budget, which is a good result, we do have a facilities committee next week, where we will bring an updated prioritization for projects and budget for the 10-year plan and how we would address that, so that we'll be doing that with facilities committee on Monday.
And using this new firm, have we changed the construction and the estimated life of these roofs?
I would have to get back to Eric with you on that.
Okay, I'm just curious, because I know there was some discussion about looking at a slightly different type of construction that had a slightly longer life, required a little more underlayment or some kind of construction to it, and I'm just curious if that's where they went, or they went with another type of...
I will follow up with him and get back to you on that.
Another type of roofing system. What I'm most concerned about is what's the expected life of these roofs? Thank you. Any additional questions or comments regarding the elementary re-roofing project? All those in favor as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have the city easement, permanent easement to the city of Edina at Countryside Elementary School. Can I get a motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution to grant permanent easement to the city of Edina at the Countryside Elementary School property. We saw this earlier. It went back for a little more discussion. I see we got a map here with a little more detail. Any other background you'd like to share, Margot?
We worked with the city just to isolate only the sidewalk portion, so that is the only change. You have that in the visual drawing. We did work through it in finance committee, and we do recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I have just a curiosity. So going forward, does something like this go to facilities, or does it go to finance?
So this one, it started in finance. I think those are all things we have to work out in the transition. But this is more in my, so if you want just my opinion, this is facility-related, and it has less of a financial impact. For example, in some areas, it might go to facilities first and then to finance. We'll have to navigate those sometimes when we have other policies. So we talked about the camera pilot earlier tonight, and in 2012, that originally went to finance committee and then was referred to policy committee. So there are times when various committees refer back and forth to each other. So I think we'll have to, depending on the issue, it could be in finance first and go to facilities or vice versa. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have a preference. I'm just curious more than anything else, how you view that kind of thing. Additional questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the permanent easement to the city of Edina at Countryside Elementary School property, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have the approval of our election judges. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint election judges for the May 5th, 2015 referendum. Any discussion, background? All those in favor of approving the election judges as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our scheduled review of the 600 series policies, policy 605, alternative programs and services, and policy 609, religion. We did see these previously. Can I get a motion to bring those to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, series 600 policies. Any changes to note, policy committee members? additions, corrections?
No changes to note since our last discussion.
Questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the series 600 policies as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That's it for this evening's action items. We're on to discussion items, general budget fund alignment plan, 15-16. We saw a presentation tonight. We spent a little bit of time on this earlier this evening at a workshop. Any additional comments or input you're looking for, Margot?
I don't have additional comments. Just if you have questions between now and requesting approval in April, please let me know.
Margot, can you explain just for people who were here when we talked about the one-time enhancements last time? What's going forward? What, how does that look in specifics for the next upcoming budget?
So the one-time enhancements from 14-15 that are moving forward? Okay, so that relates to, in the elementary area, there was some paratime for lab paratime, and then primarily for the language arts GT, gifted talented program area, that was one time in 14-15. So the recommendation is to continue to move that forward of the budget alignment task force. And then at the secondary level, it was for secondary intervention support between the middle schools and the high schools, as throughout the school year. It might be right away in September. It always takes a little bit of time to assess where students are at. There might be a student that moves in during the middle of the year, or, you know, we identify halfway through the year, they need some sort of intervention and support and some dollars for them to be able to access to address that. So those are the three areas that were one time in 14-15 that we continue to bring forward.
Thanks.
Just for the public's information, what does the budget alignment task force consist of? What's the membership?
We had two elementary and two secondary principals and district-wide administrators, so director of HR, myself, the controller, Dr. Dresson, Steve Butner. All righty, so administrative team. And we looped back through, so it was, we were a core group that met at least once a week for four or five weeks. But we looped back through the elementary principals, who have meetings twice a month, and secondary principals, and then also, and they report back to their groups, and then also as principals and administrators at large. So there was a constant looping of information between lead team, the large group of principals, this task force, and then the small groups of principals, back and forth for about a six or eight-week period, actually.
And they were also then in contact with their site leadership teams as well, so they were aware of how this was evolving, the various building principals, state. Thanks, Margot. Any other questions on this? School bus cameras, we saw the presentation this evening. The plan is to bring this back for the next meeting?
Yes, for approval.
For approval. Any questions, comments? There were a few questions asked earlier.
I do think any time we're going to increase surveillance of students, it's worth the board at least thinking about the propriety of that and where we are down that slippery slope to perhaps doing too much and chilling behavior. The facilities committee, I'm sorry, the finance committee specifically did not discuss that issue, or we did discuss it, but specifically did not include that as part of the recommendation, which was only financially based. which was only financially based. And, you know, I will say that, you know, I don't want to raise issues just to strike them down, I do think the balance of safety and protecting students probably does merit them on buses, but I'm not sure, I come to that view hesitantly and would not want to see us go any further down the slope personally of adding cameras or video recording in our schools, and, you know, I'd invite any further comment.
Bearing in mind that we do have some video recording already in our buildings, but you were just saying not adding more.
Adding a bit beyond what we already have.
I think your point is well-taken, and when the pilot was proposed in, a year ago, this was discussed in policy with Policy 717. So, it is something that was on the board's awareness at the time that the pilot was brought up, and, you know, certainly with policy, we'll continue to review it as it comes up, but it may be something that needs to be reviewed again at our next meeting, just before this comes to a vote.
And I think you're right, that it makes sense to any time we expand what we already do, that we thoughtfully consider what it is we're doing and why we're doing it, and how intrusive it is, and what are the balancing tests. But I think on whole, for what we heard about the pilot and the buses, it seemed to be working well, it was improving behavior, improving the driving student behavior and helping being able to investigate bullying incidents, so I think on the whole, this is one I could support, but I agree with you, that it's not something we should just, you know, do without thoughtfully thinking about it.
And I agree, but I do think that there sounds like there's a fair number of controls here, access, and also it's automatically on, so it's not like there's room for control by anybody outside of the management that's in charge of the system, which I think is excellent.
Any other questions or comments or thoughts?
And did I hear that it's rewritten every month, the tape?
Yeah, you said five or six weeks, it depends, I suppose around the amount of time, but yeah.
So, we're not keeping data indefinitely? I agree.
No, we can't have kids see their behavior on the bus when they come back for the 10-year reunion.
I don't want to be in charge of that.
Anything else? Okay, the one-time waiver of student policy 538 for field trips?
Thank you, Randy. We have a unique opportunity, yes.
Do you want to motion her? No. Discussion, Dr. Dressen, we've been going all night, thank you for joining us. Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you, sir. Our secondary students have been presented with a unique learning opportunity, and that is to participate in a program that is sponsored in part by the Confucius Institute at the University of Minnesota, and we became aware of this opportunity the second to third week in January, and we have 17 students who are interested in traveling to this two-week intense world language and cultural immersion experience in China, and it will be this summer. We do have information from the University of Minnesota that they have accepted 10 of our 17 students, and we are hoping for a waiver to the 18-month prior notification requirement of policy 538 to enable these students to participate.
So, and I would just add to Susan's background, is that this was discussed at our last policy committee meeting, and the policy committee, my interpretation of it is we were in favor of the waiver for this. Just as background, we discussed it primarily from an equity point of view, if the additional point of time, addition of time would allow for more fundraising opportunities for students and potentially equity of access. Given the parameters of the way this project is unfolding, we were comfortable with how this particular project was structured, but again, we agree with the policy language that has no longer lead time for that purpose.
And it's an issue we decided that we needed to be aware of as we move forward with implementing our global competencies. If we are going to be looking at having more opportunities for overseas cultural immersion, we may need to think about, is an 18-month still necessary, and as Regina pointed out, what we can do to make sure that students have plenty of opportunities for fundraising so that all students have access to these trips. But this was a wonderful opportunity, but it raised the issues of how are we going to make sure that everybody has access to these wonderful opportunities going on in the future.
And we did make one modification, one addition, while a lot of this funding is picked up through the Confucius Institute, we are also making sure that part of this funding that we're asking the students to does cover some of the costs as relates to our administrative costs going over, so that's included in the cost of the proposal.
And Susan, just out of curiosity, what's the limitation? They only accepted certain students, or they said you get 10 spaces?
There are 30 students total allowed from the state of Minnesota, and the University of Minnesota team created a rubric for assessing student essays and letters of recommendation from a teacher at the school. And so, they determined that because we are a Confucius Institute classroom school, they really wanted Edina to be well-represented in the team, and they accepted 10 of our 17 applicants. Four additional students have been waitlisted in the event someone from our school or another school cannot participate.
And we got a fairly good comfort level that that was equitable assessment?
I have no reason to believe it wasn't.
Okay.
And there are all 10 that were selected and 10 being able to go?
My understanding is yes, we have not received written confirmation of that yet, but that's my understanding. And at the time that they applied, the students and their families knew of the financial commitment that they were making, and the total costs of the program, and the timeline. So, all of that was articulated prior to them applying.
And any sense that any students did not apply because the short timeframe impacted them negatively?
I have no evidence of that, but it is certainly something that we had tremendous conversation about, that that certainly is a possibility, whose applications were not included because of those limitations.
So, not everyone who could apply did?
That is a possibility, we don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know.
It was a summer travel, there were some other limitations.
But I see your point. The question is, is when you see that it's $2,500, there are going to be some people who might really want to go and benefit from the trip, but seeing the price would not even have done an application, and given that short time span, there was no opportunity for fundraising or other opportunities. So, I don't know if we can answer that question, but it's obvious that it's a possibility, because that's a price tag.
And that's what we're putting on our radar for discussion going forward, so that next time this comes up, we feel much more comfortable about that.
So, might we be able to have a mechanism where we have a fund, where if it hops into a wave?
We've had a lot of discussion about that as well, and it was something that would impact all, it's discussion that's not just relevant to any kind of international travel, it's relevant for any travel. So, we talked about, we don't have any solutions yet, but definitely something that we need to figure out as a district, how do we make funding available that is equitable for all trips and not dependent upon a strong booster group or parent fundraising group for one particular activity, whereas one such group may not exist for another kind of activity. There needs to be equity across all types of travel and all types of field trips.
Additional comments, questions?
The sentence at the end says, "Teaching and learning supports this." I'm not sure, did this go to teaching and learning, or did this go to policy?
Definitely came to policy.
It came to policy, yes. I don't think it did come to teaching and learning.
Just edit that for the action time period.
Excellent. Anything else before we move on? Next up, we have our 1516 meeting dates. It sounds like we have some new Tuesday meetings because of holidays, and then commencement on the 4th. Any questions, comments? Seeing none? We're on to Policy 509 and 602, or should we approve that first step?
I already know that I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Been waiting all night for policy discussion, we must have it. 509 is, just some language adjustments, as you see in the policy, our bigger discussion was probably around 602. With 602, there was discussion about the overall procedure for calendar and beginning with our discussion of general statement of policy and aligning our purpose for putting together the calendar to align with learning. Some of the language in the policy wasn't necessarily directed toward learning, and we wanted to make sure that that was supported. The policy committee also talked about the process and probably spent most of its time talking about process, and you'll see in this particular draft that the proposal is that the policy, or that the proposed calendar not necessarily had any other outside vote, that it be discussed by the calendar committee and then be presented to the board for review. This particular policy will be addressed with EME and go through HR before it comes back to this group for additional approval. Was it ever in policy that the calendar was to go to staff for vote? No, there was reference to it, there's reference, but not a part of that. Gwen can give a much better history of that than I can, but she does have the history of how that practice has come to be, and at certain points in time, it has been part of the discussion between the teachers and the board, and so it became a practice, but it isn't mandated in policy.
So, but I was trying to clarify, because when I was looking through the edits, I couldn't see where it was originally in policy, that there was that step of going to some sort of a staff vote.
Not an actual vote, that kind of language, no. The review through meet and confer is language that was in the policy, but not specific language that referenced a vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, Regina. Anything else?
I had some questions on Policy 509 in terms of resident enrollment, and the reason this came to mind was when I was reviewing my packet, I was also, it made me think about the discussions we've been having around non-resident enrollment. So, as I read through this, I had a couple of questions. Under number four, letter B, I was kind of wondering about, we were kind of almost talking about this a little bit tonight in our work session about, this is addressing where we place a student if they come to the district mid-school year. And so, you know, it kind of made me wonder, is there a max guideline around that type, that part of a policy in terms of assigning a resident student that hasn't come in at the beginning of the school year? Will we look at our current guidelines when making those decisions as for placement? And then how is that student affected the following year, when their parents are now living in district, or their guardians are now living in district as of the first day of the school year?
So, we have had a couple of situations this year with our classes at Cornelia, kindergarten classes, the numbers were very large in kindergarten, we had some resident families move in, could not have placed them at Cornelia, or we would have had kindergarten classes of 26, 27, so offered them a spot at one of our other schools where I knew we had busing, with the understanding that they will be returning to Cornelia for first grade next year as the policy indicates.
So, we have, so this has worked within the number parameters, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
On intra-district tran... Oh, I'm sorry.
Before you go on, so, are we looking, are we done for next year, looking at any of those numbers as far as the difference between open and resident students in the various classes?
No, we're not.
That's going to come up, that's going to go to policy in the near future, or what's the?
I think it'll probably come to a work session.
Work session, okay, thank you. Sorry.
No problem.
To interrupt, Sarah.
So, my last question then is around elementary choice programs, and our policy, our policy here as written basically states that there's the two-choice programs, and that the acceptance of those applications and placements of those students is determined by each individual school and is overseen by the superintendent, or at least reviewed and approved by the superintendent. My concern around this part of the policy is that it seems to me that with choice programs that there should be some district-level, board-level policy written around how those placements are made, some of the generalities around process for that, rather than it being, because today I took the time to actually go to Highlands and Countryside and Normandale's websites, pretending I'm a kindergarten new parent, and how does this work? How, I mean, do they take the 200 names that have applied and put them in a fishbowl and draw them out one at a time? I mean, there was nothing that would clearly indicate how this process works, and then when you go beyond just the random drawing of students, then are there any attached priorities? I know, you know, say in CP, and I'm assuming likely at Normandale as well, siblings get priority over incoming students, and then I'm wondering, do we have priorities for staff in the district?
Appendix one to that policy contains all that information.
That would be my mistake, then.
But it's a good question, because it's been thought of. I mean, it's a reasonable question, so it is addressed.
And I do think it's worthy of us reviewing through the BG5 study, Sarah.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. No, I made a note of it so that we can bring it up at our next meeting. How that whole process works and clarity for parents, and I apologize for not going further down. That is my mistake.
We can talk about the appendix as well.
Thank you.
My only comment is the number of stars we have now for footnotes is a little overwhelming. We maybe want to go to ABC or something down there?
No, I agree. Maybe we can possibly incorporate the definitions within the text for clarity, so that's another good point.
Thank you, because you could see how apparent this is.
And you think, person entering the district for the first time.
First time.
Speaking of foreign language.
And I was going to say, right, somebody who's not... This is difficult. Not supposed to be policy immersion, it's language immersion.
And I think it's interesting that it's not specifically spelled on the choice programs websites, so I think that's something...
Where I naturally went as a parent.
To think about is, not to give a parent another step to figure it out, it should be...
A link or something.
A link or something, mm-hmm. Thanks for pointing that out.
Okay, anything else on those policies? We have the organization of the school calendar and school day next, 602. Any background?
We already talked about that.
Or any other thing, anything else there that anybody needs? Think we're done? Information? Any updates? Announcements?
Just a quick announcement that at last month's meeting, we did have several members from City of Edina talk to us about our policy around non-resident enrollment or open enrollment. The policy committee did complete some follow-up with our legal counsel, who is doing the further research on that, and we'll be back in touch with the committee, and then I would guess the committee would come back to the full board, remember, any changes in those procedures would be for the 2016, '17 school year. Also, note that the Director of Continuous Improvement, formerly known as Director of Researching Evaluation, that position has been posted in the district. This is a job that Susan is wonderfully completing in an interim position, but that position is posted effective July 1. From a leadership standpoint, that is the one position we have open in our school district at this point. Also, the policy as it related to the consent agenda, the civil rights research was posted and then got dropped through the computer system, so it was a software glitch, so now we know.
Thank you, Rick. Any other announcements, updates?
Do you want to remind people of the Thursday community meeting?
I would. This Thursday, the district will be hosting its... I would. This Thursday, the district will be hosting its first community meeting. We've had a variety of meetings already, but our first community meeting at 7:00 at Creek Valley Elementary School. This will be regarding the referendum and questions around that, as well as our strategic plan. It'll be very informal, be a time of presentation, but then a time of question and answer. And it's always a good dialogue when we get together and talk about things that impact learning young people in our future.
And that'll be March 19.
March 19.
Any other announcements? You'll watch that video a month from now and show up there on Thursday night and say, where is everybody?
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second to adjourn this evening's meeting. Any objections to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.